I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for October 27th, 2025. Good evening and welcome to tonight's school board meeting. It's hard to believe how quickly the school year is moving along and that we're already settling into cooler fall days. As a reminder, the Community Survey for the Superintendent Search is open through Friday, October 31st. Your input is essential, part of the success, and we strongly encourage everyone to take a few minutes to share their thoughts. The survey can be found on the Division's website, and there will also be an opportunity during tonight's meeting for public comments specifically related to the Superintendent Search. Your voices play a vital role in shaping the future of our school division. And with that, I would now like to read you the YCSD mission statement. The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. I'd also like to say that Chelsea Simonsen, a student of YCSD, passed away a couple weeks ago, and we want to extend our thoughts and prayers to the family. And with that, please join me in a moment of silence. Now, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Charlotte Phil, a first grader at Seaford Elementary. We are honored to welcome Charlotte Phil, a bright and enthusiastic first grader in Ms. Stalls' class at Seaford Elementary as our pledge leader. Charlotte is a model student who shares kindness with everyone she meets. She loves coming to school to play with friends, write stories, and read, especially Pete the Cat books. Her favorite subject is reading, and she especially enjoys visiting the Seaford Library during resource classes. Charlotte's curiosity and love of learning shine through in everything she does. She has a deep passion for animals, with her favorite being a two-headed snake. Charlotte dreams of becoming a veterinarian so she can help all kinds of animals, from pets to zoo creatures and even animals in the wild. Her compassion, enthusiasm, and leadership make her a wonderful representative for Seaford Elementary. We are proud to have Charlotte lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and celebrate the bright future ahead of this outstanding bulldog. Please stand as Charlotte leads the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We shifted the agenda slightly to be able to recognize some outstanding students in our division at the beginning of the meeting. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to recognize our students who have earned distinction through the National Merit Scholarship Program, one of the nation's most prestigious academic competitions, recognizing the top scores on the PSAT NMSQT test. Each year, less than 1% of high school seniors are named semifinalists, and a select group of additional high-achieving students earn commended status. These national merit semifinalists and commended students exemplify academic excellence, perseverance, and a love of learning, and we celebrate not only their accomplishments, but also the teachers, families, and mentors who have supported them along the way. If you are here this evening, please stand up with your families when I read your name. The commended students are: From Bruton High School, Colin Moyer. From Grafton High School, Mason Akamina. Landon Sue. And Elisa Winkles. From TAB High School, Brandon Eubanks. Kat Loftus. Vivian Moore. River Williams. And from York High School, Ashira Farrell. And David Forrest. And the semifinalists are: From Grafton High School, Marcus Mason. From TAB High School, Arusha Rosada. Megan Wei. And Eddie Zhu. Congratulations to these incredible students.
Okay, at this time, we're just gonna take a really brief recess just to take pictures. We will now recognize our Seniors of the Month for each school. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family members while we hear about your accomplishments. We'll first start with Bruton High School.
Thank you. Isaiah Randall, go ahead and stand on up, yes. Isaiah is the son of Brandon and Monique Randall, and this is number two of the family, I think, that's been Senior of the Month, right? Yes, okay. Bruton High School is proud to recognize Isaiah Randall as our Senior of the Month. Isaiah is an exceptional young man who has displayed qualities of perseverance, leadership, and empathy. These qualities have shown through his roles as a Fellowship of Christian Athlete Huddle Leader, a two-time class president, and captain of the basketball team, positions that reflect his ability to inspire and unite those around him. In the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Isaiah built meaningful relationships and helped guide others toward a deeper understanding of their faith. His genuine concern for others is evident in the way he encourages his peers. These leadership skills have been highlighted in his time as class president also. In this role, he represents his classmates, organized and executed events, fundraisers, and found ways to support his peers in the Bruton community. As a captain of the basketball team, Isaiah leads by example. One honor includes being named Second Team All-Region and All-District. Isaiah's ability to motivate others is evident both on and off the court. Isaiah's academic journey is marked by perseverance or persistence and a commitment to excellence. Isaiah's achievements include winning an NAACP ACSA Award, which highlights his ability to excel beyond athletics. Congratulations to Isaiah. He's gonna be attending Hampton-Sidney College in the fall, and this year, Bruton is gonna beat Grafton in basketball. Congratulations, guys.
Next, we'll hear from Grafton High School.
We'll beat the Bruton. I would like to invite Erica O and her family to please stand up. Thank you very much. Erica O is an exceptional student whose dedication, leadership, and compassion make her a standout member of the YCSD community. As a class president, a scholar in the early college program, and a multi-sport athlete, Erica consistently demonstrates excellence in academics, extracurriculars, and services. Her involvement spans DECA, BAND, Day at York County, and multiple honor societies showcasing her commitment to growth and impact. Erica's kindness, work ethic, and outgoing nature inspire those around her, and her ability to balance rigorous coursework with meaningful leadership and volunteer work reflects her remarkable character. She has earned numerous awards for academic achievement, athletic performance, and community service, including MVP honors and DECA competition placements. Erica's positive energy and drive to uplift others make her a true role model. We are proud to recognize Erica as a Senior of the Month in Grafton. Congratulations.
Okay, next, we'll hear from TAB High School. Would Prithvi Pathak and his family please stand? TAB High School is pleased to announce Prithvi Pathak as October's Senior of the Month. Prithvi exemplifies the qualities of a student leader and all-around excellent human. In addition to an impressive academic resume, Prithvi has been a student at the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology, where he has been completing courses in the rigorous engineering strand. As part of his academic pursuits, he seeks opportunities to stretch his intellect and his abilities. Prithvi has tapped into his creative side in the TAB Theater Program and helping to lead the creative writing club. He was instrumental in making sure the TAB Literary Magazine was published after several years without one. Performing and leading groups is Prithvi pushing himself out of his comfort zone, but he accomplishes these activities with grace, talent, and kindness. Beyond TAB High, Prithvi is a skilled taekwondo participant and should earn his Black Belt by the end of June. He is hoping to attend either Yale University or UVA, where he plans to major in STEM and minor in creative writing. While he plans to own his own business in computer science or engineering, he also hopes to one day be a published science fiction author one day. Congratulations, Prithvi. Congratulations. And I have the pleasure of telling you about our York High School Senior of the Month. Would Kaylee Norden and her parents Cameron and Jamie Norden please stand?
York High is proud to recognize Kaylee Norden as our Senior of the Month. Kaylee is a hard-working student who has made a significant impact on our school's community, and she truly embodies the spirit of York High. As a prominent member of the IB program, she exemplifies academic excellence and a commitment to learning. Kaylee is also a member of multiple honor societies, has volunteered with numerous community service organizations, and is the current volleyball team captain. Her passion for the arts and commitment to excellence has also made her a valuable part of our drama productions. Kaylee also has a talent to articulate very well and is a key figure in promoting our students' public speaking skills through the Model UN Club she started at York High School. In addition to her academics and extracurriculars, Kaylee is most well-known for her exceptional kindness, positivity, and friendliness. Kaylee's positive spirit and genuine respect for others create a welcoming environment for all our staff and students. Nominated by her teachers and counselor for this recognition, Kaylee displays the qualities of an outstanding student balancing academics, leadership, and community service. Congratulations, Kaylee.
All right, next, we have our student awards and volunteer awards. Dr. Carroll's going down, and I'm gonna ask Barbara Nagel, Seaford Elementary Principal, to step forward and remain down front while I share information about the Student Service Award recipient and Volunteer of the Month for Seaford. Okay, all right. The recipient for Seaford Elementary Service Award is Kalissa Anthony. I'll share a little bit about Kalissa as she comes forward. We are proud to recognize fifth-grade student Kalissa Anthony from Mr. Holly's class at Seaford Elementary as the recipient of the Student Service Award. Since joining Seaford in third grade, Kalissa has exemplified what it means to be a bulldog, leading with kindness, serving with purpose, and learning with enthusiasm. She's actively involved in the Student Advisory Board, Ambassador's Club, Military Kids Club, Bulldog Reading Buddies, and Chorus. This year, she joins Kindness Club, Girls with Pearls, and Dodgeball Club. Kalissa helped present professional development to teachers, engaging students with math games, and serves as a junior educator for the Right at School program. She's an honor roll student, earning all As since third grade. Her favorite subject is history, with math a close second. She's proposing a Bulldog Math Buddies Club to support peer learning. Kalissa remembers how welcome she felt as a new student and works to ensure others feel the same. Her leadership and service inspire us all. Seaford is proud to celebrate this outstanding bulldog. The Volunteer of the Month for Seaford Elementary is Ms. Heather Montville. I will share some information about Ms. Montville as she comes up. We are proud to recognize Ms. Heather Montville as Seaford Elementary's Volunteer of the Year. Ms. Montville has generously served the Seaford community for many years, making a lasting impact through her time, energy, and dedication. She has volunteered in classrooms, organized library volunteers, supported school events, and led efforts to update the PTA website. She also helped organize School Spirit Fridays and played a key role in the success of the Seaford Walk-a-thon, which raised over $40,000 last year. Ms. Montville takes great pride in her volunteer work, knowing it benefits students, teachers, and the entire school community. She is the proud parent of three children, Addison, a fourth grader, Emma, a kindergartner, and Thomas, an eighth grader at York Middle School. Her commitment to Seaford reflects the heart of our school's mission: building strong connections and creating joyful learning experiences. We are deeply grateful for all she does and proud to honor her tonight. The student recipient this month for Grafton Middle School is Tenley Frederickson. Mr. Pyavich will now share about Tenley as she comes up front.
Tonight, we are honored to recognize Tenley Frederickson for her leadership, compassion, and remarkable commitment to our Grafton Middle School community. Tenley serves as a Clipper Ambassador, a role in which she welcomes new students, helps them feel at home, and represents what it truly means to be a Grafton Clipper. Known for her kind and caring spirit, Tenley has a special way of comforting students when they have a tough day and making everyone feel included. Beyond our school walls, Tenley continues to shine as a member of the juvenile arthritis family, serving on the middle school planning committee. She has appeared on the Hampton Roadshow, where she has shared her story and raised awareness for the Arthritis Foundation. Tenley has also inspired our entire Grafton community by encouraging students and staff to participate in the Jingle Bell Run, a local event supporting arthritis awareness. She has been a youth honoree and an 11-time participant, which is a true testament to her dedication and perseverance. Tenley's kindness, advocacy, and leadership makes her a shining example of what it means to serve others with heart. We are so proud to recognize her tonight for the positive impact she continues to make at the Grafton Middle School and beyond. Congratulations.
The Volunteer of the Month for Grafton Middle School is Ms. Rachel Skimeka. Ms. Skimeka, would you please join us up front while Mr. Pyavich shares information about you?
Tonight, we are proud to recognize Ms. Rachel Skimeka for her outstanding service and unwavering commitment to the Grafton Middle School community. Rachel has been an active part of our school family for the past four years. Even after her daughter Izzy moved on to high school, her presence at the Grafton remains strong. Whether serving on the PTSA, helping with school dances, decorating our halls, or assisting with family engagement events, Rachel's impact can be felt throughout the building. Her son Anthony, now a Grafton Middle School student, shared that his mom has always volunteered in schools, even spending every Thursday helping in the library at the Grafton Elementary when he was younger. He says it makes him happy to see his mom in the halls, always ready to lend a hand, because he knows she does it from her heart. He also shared that her example inspires him to give back, and he currently serves as an usher at the church and looks forward to volunteering when he's older. Rachel's generosity extends beyond the school walls. She's the first to help family members, whether it's setting up a hot tub or contributing to family dinners, and she continues to volunteer at the high school with Izzy through the Booster Club and concession stand. Her kindness, dedication, and spirit of service truly reflects the best of the Grafton community. We are deeply grateful for her continued support and are honored to recognize her tonight for her lasting contributions to Grafton Middle School. Thank you.
Congratulations to all our award recipients. We will now have the York Foundation for Public Education awards. Mr. Schaefer, can you tell us about those?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Jimmy Ruth, a York Foundation for Public Education member, to step forward and assist Dr. Carroll as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Charlotte Phil, a first grader from Seaford Elementary School for reciting a Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We'd also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients: Kalissa Anthony from Seaford Elementary School. And Tenley Frederickson from Grafton Middle School. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month for this month: Isaiah Randall from Bruton High School. Erica O from Grafton High School. Prithvi Pathak from TAB High School. There we go. And Kaylee Norden from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education Incorporated in partnership with a donor, Jean Vioka of Cookie Text, and Edible Tweet. A Sweet Frog gift card is also being donated by Derek Mahan from Sweet Frog. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients.
Anybody who needs to get pictures, please feel free. Jump up. Okay, all right. You guys are good. All right, we now will move on to the Virginia School Board Association Academy Awards. Dr. Carroll, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on the points earned between July 1st and June 30th. Now, the board members receiving something tonight have their pins and certificates at their seats. The awards being presented tonight are: First, the Award of Honor and Gold Pin to Mr. Richardson. The Award of Achievement and Bronze Pin to Mr. Schaefer. Award of Recognition, Mrs. Goodwin, Mr. Pyavich, and Dr. Shandor. And we'll make sure Dr. Shandor gets his certificate.
Next, we're gonna have our Accent on Academics. Dr. Carroll, can you tell us about that?
Okay. Tonight's Accent on Academics will showcase Inquiry in Action AP Seminar Spotlights. I will turn the time over to Mr. Stephen Gavin, Grafton High School Principal. Mr. Gavin?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Carroll. I am Steve Gavin, the very proud principal of Grafton High School. Tonight, we are pleased to present Inquiry in Action AP Seminar Spotlights, highlighting how our students are engaging authentic, inquiry-based learning experiences that strengthen their critical thinking, research, collaboration, and communication skills as they explore real-world issues that matter to them. The AP Seminar course was introduced at Grafton High School and across the Division during the 2024-25 school year as part of the High School Program of Studies. Through this course, students engage in extensive research, analyze complex issues from multiple perspectives, and communicate evidence-based arguments. AP Seminar embodies the Division's future-ready graduates' priority by empowering students to think critically, collaborate effectively, and apply their learning to real-world challenges, skills essential for success in college, career, and civic life. The AP Seminar course exemplifies the future-ready graduates' priority by offering engaging learning experiences that mirror the rigor of college and the demands of the modern workplace. The course also advances college and career readiness by cultivating critical thinking, communication, and problem-solving skills that prepare students to succeed in any path they choose beyond high school. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Wallace Green, English Department Chair at Grafton High School, who will share additional information about the course and the exciting opportunities it provides for our students.
Good evening. I'm Wallace Green, English Department Chair at Grafton High School. AP Capstone is a college board diploma program designed to help students develop the skills most valued in college and beyond: critical thinking, research, and communication. The program is built around two year-long courses, AP Seminar and AP Research. At Grafton High School, AP Seminar was introduced last year as the first step in this sequence, giving students the opportunity to explore real-world issues through inquiry and evidence-based analysis. This year, we have added AP Research, where students design and conduct an independent study on a topic of personal interest. Students who complete both courses can earn the AP Seminar and Research Certificate, demonstrating their mastery of college-level research and communication skills. Those who go further to complete four additional AP exams across their high school years, earning a three or higher on each, qualify for the prestigious AP Capstone Diploma. A recognition of advanced academic readiness and a strong foundation for success in college, career, and life. Tonight's presentation will focus on the first of the two courses, the AP Seminar course. Having shared an overview of AP Seminar, the first of the two Capstone courses implemented at Grafton High, we would now like to provide a closer look at the course in action. In this video, students share their experiences in AP Seminar, highlighting how the course has strengthened their research skills and public speaking abilities while engaging in meaningful, real-world inquiry and collaborative projects. The AP Seminar course prepares students for college-level research, writing, and public speaking skills.
So, AP Seminar really taught me a lot about presentational skills, working in group projects, and really just being a strong writer. projects, and really just being a strong writer in the areas of research and argumentation. And so that definitely translates into other AP classes such as AP Language and Composition, where you have to write argumentative papers, and you also have to do a lot of argumentation in general.
Public speaking skills. To have a class of sophomores stand up for about a 12-minute speech is very daunting. And so we spent a fair amount of the year just preparing them to be comfortable in front of a class, knowing good public speaking skills, and, by the way, at the end of the year, they were fantastic.
In college or any type of career, you're going to have to talk to a crowd or, like, present something to them.
Through AP Seminar, I learned how to become a good public speaker, and through doing multiple presentations in that class, I became less afraid to speak in public.
Along with the public speaking skills, you have research skills, you have writing skills, you have collaborative skills. So much of it is going to help them when they go off to college. They will walk in knowing more about research than I did as a senior, and it just, it amazes me how much they learn during the course of a year.
From AP Seminar, one question that inspired my curiosity was a topic we did for our group for the TMP, the Team Multimedia Presentation, and it was something that allowed me to dive deep into the research and really explore and expand my views.
I think just like picking a topic I like for Performance Task 1 and Performance Task 2 was the most memorable part for me, because I like to research what I want to research.
The Seminar course gives a really great basis for doing extensive research, and this course can really help you with research in college, and also you're able to pick your own topic. So I was able to pick something that I was very interested in, in this course.
So all of the skills that happen in AP Seminar lead directly into research, and research prepares them for academic research at the college level. It is now my pleasure to introduce two of our Grafton High School students, Reema Urebelo and Timothy Anderson, who successfully completed the AP Seminar course this past school year and will share their experiences with the course.
Good evening. In AP Seminar Performance Task 1, my team and I conducted a thorough literature review, analyzing multiple sources to understand different perspectives on our topic. This process was essential in shaping the development of our team solution, helping us identify strong evidence and make connections between ideas. Collaboration played a key role as we shared insights, challenged each other's thinking, and worked together to strengthen our analysis. Through this task, I developed my writing skills, learning to organize my thoughts clearly, and support my claims with strong evidence. I also had opportunities to present our findings, which helped me grow as a public speaker and gain confidence in communicating complex ideas.
In AP Seminar Performance Task 2, I worked independently to research a topic of personal interest and develop a well-supported argument. What I enjoyed most was having the freedom to explore something I was truly curious about and dive deep into the research. The process taught me how to evaluate sources carefully, organize my ideas effectively in writing, and create a clear persuasive argument. I also had the opportunity to present my findings to others, which helped me build confidence in public speaking and learn how to communicate complex ideas in a way that is engaging and understandable. Overall, this task drank them both my research and communication skills and showed me the value of thinking critically and independently.
Building on the skills students develop in AP Seminar, the newly implemented AP Research course at Grafton High allows students to take their inquiry and analytical abilities even further. In AP Research, students design and carry out independent studies, refining their research, writing, and presentation skills while exploring topics of personal interest. Together, AP Seminar and AP Research provide Grafton High students with the critical thinking, collaboration, and communication skills that ensure they graduate future-ready, well-prepared for college, careers, and life beyond high school. In fact, beginning with this class of 2026, students, having met the criteria discussed tonight, will have the opportunity to receive the AP Seminar and Research Certificate. And, beginning with the class of 2027, Grafton High School students will have the opportunity to receive the AP Capstone Diploma. This concludes our presentation. At this time, we welcome your questions and comments.
Hi. I have a question of the students. If you each could give one tip for any student in YCSD that would help them both in school as well as out in the community that you've learned from these classes?
I'd say to, when you're presenting something, you need to practice and have people watch you present, and it also helps to take videos of yourself before you prevent, before you present, so that you can know what you look like and what you might need to correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Definitely one of my tips would be, as Timothy said, practice, it doesn't exactly make perfect, but it definitely helps with the repetition, and you could also take away, you know, vocal inflection, vocal projection. It really, AP Seminar really helped me personally strengthen my speaking skills and how I project my voice and how I make my points clear when I'm speaking.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, it's obvious you both mastered public speaking very well. You've done a great job. I just have one question for both of the students. If you feel like sharing, if you don't want to share, that's okay. What was your personal topic of interest, at least one of them, just out of curiosity?
My personal topic of interest last year was educational imbalance, and I talked about how different funding for different districts for school causes some students in certain districts to have less access to higher education.
Just to clarify, are we discussing our individual multimedia presentation or the team multimedia presentation?
Either one.
I'll definitely go with my individual multimedia presentation, which was on second-generation students and just how their parents and their immigrants just came to the country and how it affects the mental health of both the immigrants and the second-generation children. Because in my life personally, I am a second-generation child, and there was one time in my life where it was really difficult, kind of just trying to get through with my generation, because I live in a very different era than my parents did, and just bridging that divide was really something that I wanted to research and look into. And through the individual multimedia presentation, I was able to express myself and also touch on an aspect of my life that I was really, really into.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, I can tell both of you guys have a very bright future ahead of you. Just so proud of you for being in Grafton, so congratulations. Exactly. So, Mr. Green, just want to say thank you for doing such a great job with the program. I know it's just start, but obviously there is result that your program is showing, and your students definitely shine here in front of us tonight. So just, I want to ask you guys a question. Were you comfortable coming into this course with public speaking, or you kind of took a gamble on it, say like, I'm going to go through this thing and I'm going to get a confidence? Because I know a lot of kids your age or younger, they're looking at it, they're kind of, I don't want to be in the spotlight. They don't have the courage to step up, and if you didn't have it, how did you find it and how did you use it to get into this class and become what you are today?
So before I started this course, I did have experience in theater, and so that definitely helped me be able to do public speaking. And like I said previously, I used video recordings of myself, and this helped me see what I looked like and what I needed to correct.
When I went into this class, I was not afraid of the public speaking aspect, because I had taken a public speaking class in eighth grade. That public speaking class really, really helped me just develop my foundation of public speaking, as my teacher was really harping on different styles and like themes of public speaking, such as in a business setting, or in a personal setting, or in an argumentative setting, my bad. And with public speaking, it really helped me because in my own life, my extracurriculars specifically, in band, I am one of the drum majors at Grafton High School, and public speaking is a really important part of that, not just because you're just calling commands and shouting to over probably 140 people, you also have to make sure that you're heard, you have to make sure that the band hears you, and you also have to make sure that you are present within the band as an author, almost an authoritative figure.
And, Mr. Green, quick question. What is the response from the kids trying to get into it? Do you have a lot of interest for your class, or?
There is a fair, yes, there's a lot of interest in it, and when students understand that they're doing what essentially is PhD-level work in the AP Research class, it gets their attention. They realize that they're going to go into college just a leg up of everybody else, and so they're aware.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a quick, well, question, I guess. So, public speaking is a real fear for a lot of people. I mean, if you do the research, it's up there. It's up there on like one of the top three fears that people have. So I can imagine as a high school student coming into a class, and you two seem like you were pretty confident kind of coming in, but what about for a student who wants to do that, but the public speaking part is just, they're really scared? How do you help them kind of overcome that part of it to see that they can do it, they can get through it? Because I know that that is a big fear for a lot of, a lot of adults, not just students, I mean adults.
It absolutely is a fear for a lot of people. I was nervous coming here. The answer to your question is, we start from the very first week, there's a lot of scaffolding. We just, we build, we start with stand-up in front of the class with a partner, we have a one-minute presentation. During the course of the year, basic, and we start with a very safe environment, we know we're going to be supported, it's going to be positive reinforcement, and during the course of the year, their confidence grows. And the seminar class has two performance tasks, and in both of those, you know, it's about a 12-minute speech, which, you know, as you said, even a lot of adults would be nervous about, so the growth is amazing.
Thank you. It sounds like a great course. Thank you very much.
Yes. I'd like to commend both Mr. Green and Mr. Gavin, because I think that this is an excellent class. Your students here, I mean, they were confident when they came up, had great posture, eye contact, I mean, they had it all, all right, in it, and I just think it's great, and those are definitely skills that are needed. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to now take a recess, a short recess, to meet with award recipients and their families. All right, we will now reconvene our meeting. I understand we have an Eagle Scout in the audience this evening. Hi, would you like to come up and tell us a little about?
What troop you're from?
Your troop you're from, and I see you've earned quite a few badges there.
I've earned more, too.
Just a few, couple.
Okay. So, I'm Bryson Jones, I'm in Troop 103, I'm a Life Scout. I have, I'm working on Eagle, I'm working on a MAB badge right now, I'm taking notes at this meeting.
Okay.
It's a citizenship in the community, and, yeah, what else?
So I understand you've already done your project, so this is just a, you just have one badge left or a couple badges?
Just this one badge.
Just this one, this is it?
And for the project?
Then you go before your board of review?
Yes.
Excellent.
For the project, I did a nine-square at the Queens Lake Middle School. I did that a couple, about a month ago, a couple months ago, and that is just wrapping it up right now, I'm just doing the paperwork.
Good job. Thank you for everything you've done.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any unfinished business, I believe, and so we will go on to presentations. We have an HR plan update. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Dr. Dave Wrights, Chief Human Resources Officer, will give you a quick update regarding the Teacher Specialist Special Education position.
Good evening, Dr. Carroll, Madam Chair, members of the board. This position was recently approved by the board a few months ago. It's the Teacher Specialist Special Education position, and we are looking at the approval to add 20 days to this position, and the rationale for that is that we are looking at enhancing our recruitment efforts for this position, also providing more support for the summer programming, assisting end-of-year responsibilities, and also providing professional development and planning and support, not only to our teachers, but some of our administrators. So, does, and that is it? Does anyone have any questions?
Is this one position or?
It is one position.
Just one position for the whole division?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
All right, we now have the WHRO 2024-2025 Annual Impact Statement. Dr. Carroll, can you tell us something about our presenter?
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Elmer Seward to the podium to give us a presentation on the WHRO 24-25 Annual Impact Statement, and I'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Carroll, I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you this evening. My name is Elmer Seward, I'm the Vice President of Education at WHRO. Bert Schmidt, who is the CEO and President, normally comes along and makes the presentation. Unfortunately, he's sick tonight, so tag I'm it. The reason I'm here tonight is that WHRO is unique in that we are the only public media station in the country who is owned by a collaboration of 21 school divisions, York County being one of them. So we do a lot in the field of education to support school divisions, and every year we submit a report to every school division. It's customized for that division regarding all of the education activities that we provided during the past year. So you have in front of you a hard copy, and I think you also have a digital copy and board docs of the 2024-25 Annual Impact Statement. We not only provide that on a yearly basis, but on a bi-yearly basis, Bert and I go and visit each of the school divisions to give a report in person. So tonight, I would like to give you an overview of all of the education resources available to York County as a result of your ownership in WHRO. I have a brief video I would like to show you, which summarizes these activities that you'll find in the report.
WHRO stands out as the nation's sole public media station owned by a collaboration of 21 school divisions. This distinctive ownership model places education at the heart of our mission, influencing every aspect of our work. Our team of educators is committed to offering students, teachers, and families innovative, free, high-quality programs and services. One key service that WHRO offers is E-Media VA, Virginia's leading digital content repository. With nearly 100,000 free, top-quality instructional resources, E-Media VA provides educators and students with videos, interactive tools, games, lesson plans, images, and more. This platform is designed to enhance personalized learning and make classroom experiences more engaging. For our youngest learners, WHRO offers exciting educational activities to spark their imagination. Our three education vans visit elementary schools with programs tailored to Virginia's standards of learning, covering literacy, numeracy, scientific investigation, and technology. We also support parents and caregivers, ensuring children are prepared for kindergarten and set up for success in their early school years. For secondary educators, WHRO provides a catalog of 29 award-winning, customizable online courses and digital resources. These media-rich, SOL-aligned courses are designed to integrate seamlessly with various learning management systems. They offer flexibility for face-to-face, flipped, blended, and fully online teaching environments, enriching lessons with engaging content. At WHRO, we celebrate student achievement At WHRO, we celebrate student achievements through competitions that showcase their talents. The Great Computer Challenge, for example, gathers school teams from across the region at Old Dominion University to tackle real-world technology problems. Another highlight is the Town Bank Regional Spelling Bee, where middle-school champions compete at WHRO's studio for a chance to advance to the Scripps National Spelling Bee. The local competition is recorded and aired on WHRO each April. Elementary students also have an opportunity to shine through our PBS Kids Writers Contest. This competition invites young writers to craft and illustrate their original stories, fostering creativity and critical thinking. Our Student Advisory Board reflects our commitment to student engagement. This group of high school students offers feedback on WHRO's content and has opportunities to create their own, influencing our online courses and E-Media VA resources. We're equally devoted to supporting educators through our professional development programs. Our workshops and training sessions provide teachers with cutting-edge strategies and tools, empowering them to inspire and guide their students effectively. Visit WHRO's education webpage to learn more about how these amazing free materials, programs, and resources can benefit you. At WHRO Public Media, we're proud to partner with our local school divisions and the Virginia Department of Education to shape the future of education, one student at a time.
Now, one thing that you as school board members are probably very interested in is how your investment in WHRO is returned to you. And so you'll find on page 12 of the document, a return on investment report. You'll find that last year, York County invested $48,450 in WHRO and then received in return total direct annual, total direct annual value savings of $676,371. This really gives you a return on investment. For every dollar that you invested in WHRO, you received $14.90 of educational services and products available to all of your students and teachers. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a quick one. When I was teaching full-time here in YCSD several years ago, WHRO sponsored graduate courses for free that we could use for recertification. Is that what the education online courses are? And do you still do that or not?
No, the online courses are courses that we have built that are completely textbook-independent. They cover every SOL in that particular subject, and they're for high school students, with the exception of one, which is the Middle School Career Investigations Course. But those are designed for York County to be able to offer them, and I believe York County uses a number of them in their online program with students. Yeah, we used to offer that program for teachers, and we've tried to re-install it. The problem is coming up with a college or university that's willing to partner with us to be able to offer it, and I don't, I'm not sure if it was offered at no cost. I know we had some that were offered at low cost for college credit.
No, no, when I took them, they were free.
And we would like to do that again. I've approached a couple of colleges, and they weren't particularly interested, unfortunately.
That's a shame, because it was an excellent way for teachers to get those recertification points, and it also reinforced what we were teaching in our classrooms.
I agree. I would like to be able to foster a relationship like that with college or university. We've not been able to get one so far. Sorry. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll now move into the comments of citizens. This evening, you have two opportunities to speak, one for general comments and the other for a public hearing on the Superintendent Search Survey. Before I open for public comments, I'll share some remarks. The school board provides public comment periods for the public to comment on matters related to the business or duties of the school board and school division. School Board Policy KD-BDDH governs these public comment periods. I would encourage citizens to review this policy prior to speaking before the board. Briefly, the school board expects speakers to refrain from any speech or conduct that is a clear violation of a law, such as abusive or threatening language that incites criminal behavior or that creates an actual disruption to the meeting. We ask that speakers direct their comments to the school board and not to members of the audience. Violations of school board policy KD-BDDH may result in a warning or termination of a speaker's time by the chair. The sanction is immediately appealable to the whole board at the speaker's option. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Speakers will present their comments at the podium, a timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and district or area of residence. I now open the public participation for comments of citizens. Our first speaker is Steve Fisher.
Hello, my name is Steve Fisher. I live at 108 Old Dominion Road, Yorktown, Edgell neighborhood across from York High School. I've been teaching at York High School for a long time. I don't know if Dr. Carroll was on the board back when Dr. Shandor first became superintendent or not, but I don't think anybody else up here was. I've been an educator for 32 years, I'm a girls' tennis coach, I was a swim team coach for 17 years, and I had a quick story to tell about Dr. Shandor, and I wish I could have made it last meeting or when he was here before, but hopefully he'll be watching this. My first, or his first year, my, I don't know, losing track of years, 15th year. His first year when he came into York County School Division, I had a tennis team that was very good. I've had very good tennis teams over the years, and we were going to have to graduate. Two of my girls, without going to graduation, we'd have to miss it, traveling all the way out to Lynchburg or Blacksburg or whatever, far, far away, too far away to make the graduation. And I called Mark Medford, who used to be on the board, and I said, "Mark, could you just come as a super, as a board supervisor's person while I do this graduation ceremony?" And he said, "Sure." And then the next thing I know, the brand-new superintendent is saying, "I'm going to make it as well, and, and I'm going to bring as many people as we can." And I'm pretty sure the whole board showed up, and I knew that panic happened because I didn't inform my principal very well that we were going to be doing a graduation with the chorus that I had set up and chairs from the Edgell Association. I had them all lined up there, and I had a keynote speaker and a saxophone player or something. I mean, we did it, we did it up. And the principal came and brought me a sub and said, "You better walk me through the ceremony, because everybody's coming." And the reason I'm telling that story is because everybody did come. He got there a little late, he was in Chesapeake or something, and apologized, but it showed how much he cared about the students in our system. And every student that comes through my class is one of my kids, and it proved to me that he thought of them as their kids as well. And so this was a public time that I could say thank you to Dr. Shandor, and piggybacking on your next thing, please pick somebody that cares about the students as the next superintendent, whoever it may be. It's very important. I mean, I've had family at York High School since 1954 when it opened. I graduated in 1981 from York High School, and the communities are helped by a strong school system, so keep that going if you would, and that would be all I need to say. Thank you very much. Hey, family.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Pam Pouchot.
Good evening, I'm Pam Pouchot, District 4. After last month's meeting, I now know that this board has no problem imposing its bigotry on York County schools and citizens. Meeting on Magruder and voting to keep the name of a traitor, murderer, of contraband slaves, and enforcer of slavery shows your contempt for the Jewish and Black residents of this county. Kim Goodwin, while attending a Republican breakfast, was videotaped saying, "Don't worry, I've got this covered." She was referring to the Magruder name change survey before the results were even in. For her, it was always a done deal. Mr. Pyavik expressed extreme upset when asked in private how he would feel about naming a school after Hitler. Mr. Pyavik was born in Belgrad, Serbia, formerly Yugoslavia. Perhaps he had relatives who were affected by Hitler's reign of genocide. My father was born in, excuse me, I can't pronounce the name properly, but Zemun Yugoslavia, where it is now a municipality in the city of Belgrad. The difference between them is that my father was Jewish, raised in a ghetto. I know firsthand why I had only three living paternal relatives. There are neo-Nazis who would love to name a school after their idol. I know why Blacks would feel the same way as Jews would about naming a school after a lover of enslavement and genocide. Trump rails about the dilution of the Anglo-Saxon blood, necessitating his terror-inducing arrest of migrants and US citizens who do not look white enough. Failure to exhibit compassion, understanding, or empathize with Jews and Blacks is disgusting. But then, your own idol, Donald Trump, said empathy is toxic, dangerous as hell. Due to Trump's budget, 302,000 Virginians will shortly lose health insurance, and 204,000, of which 50% of our children, will lose SNAP benefits. Has this board contacted Rob Whitman to stop this so all our students can remain healthy and not go hungry? The Federal Department of Education is contracting with Pater U, Hillsdale College, and Turning Point USA to spread white supremacist lies in civics and history classes. This is an authoritarian racist garbage propaganda. They are teaching slavery is just a historical blip, there is no systemic racism, and America's founding was flawless. The Department of Education wants to strip schools of critical thought and replace it with loyalty pledges to Trump. The goal is to rewrite history and brainwash a generation by banning books and the truth. When you ban bu, books before you ban guns, you've admitted you're more afraid of children learning than you are of them dying. An ignorant electorate is a pliable one. The white supremacist and neo-Nazi maxim states, "We must secure the existence of our people and the future of white children." In the federal budget, education funds were cut $27 million to predominantly white student districts. Districts with students of color saw cuts of $58 million. All ESL funding for migrant students was cut. All total, the deepest cuts were for Democratic-represented districts, with fewer cuts to Republican districts. Political hatred wins and students lose. Do you even care? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Sam Ray.
Good evening, my name is Sam Ray from District 3. I've come here tonight to express my deep disparagement, not only about the board's discussion to rename Magruder Elementary School, but with the process by which the discussion, decision was reached. Chair Goodwin, you were seen on social media addressing a Republican group where you stated that the, that neither you nor the board ever intended to rename Magruder, and that the public survey was approved, quote, "for the optics." These words undermine public trust. When a public survey is described as being done for the optics, it tells the community that their voices were sought for appearance's sake only. You also told attendees, "I don't think you have anything to worry about," in response to concerns to the name change. Even more concerning, the rest of the board knew about these comments and said nothing publicly to disavow them. From the absence of the open debate among members in this, from the absence of the debate among members to the misleading cost estimate that included a sign already scheduled for replacement to these undisputed comments, the entire process surrounding this issue damaged faith in the board's integrity and transparency. Throughout this process, not one member of this board vote, who voted against the name change, gave a reason for their vote. The only member who did was Mr. Schaefer, who voted to rename the school. This lack of openness is very inexcusable. Because you failed to express your reasons for keeping this name of a racist traitor on the, on the marquee, even after receiving evidence that the school was named after Magruder, I can only assume that you agreed with the cause for which he fought. If you truly are confident in the decision that you made to keep this school name, I challenge you to teach the true history of Magruder. Put a picture, put a mural on the wall, explaining to the kids who this guy is that their school is named after. This is more than about a school name. It is about honesty, credibility, and the kind of, and the kind of, uh... This is more than about a school name. This is about honesty, credibility, and the kind of leadership we expect from those entrusted in our children's education. This is not the end of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Mary Lassiter.
Good evening, Mary Lassiter, Bruton District. I am disappointed in your vote not to change the name of Magruder Elementary. I realize the Breakfast Club advised Mrs. Goodwin to ignore those of us advocating for a change. Are you being operated or administered by the Breakfast Club? I'm disappointed in the way the survey was implemented. It was not transparent because you listed $25,000 as an expense to change the signage. That is a pre-approved cost that is not related to changing the name. You are planning to change, you're planning to change or add signage to other York County schools. Currently, there is no signage on Magruder Elementary. The school was established in 1920, 105 years ago. During that time, there has not been any attempt to honor the village of Magruder, which is a, which was a predominantly Black community. There were citizens that expressed they do not want their history erased. However, you do not teach the history of General Magruder. I will offer a bit of history tonight. There was one Magruder school rather than multiple schools listed by Dr. Butler. The school had a unique situation of being displaced by the US Navy and moved to Chittam Annex. The new building was built on Penniman Road in either 1949 or 1951. It was the same school for white students of Bruton District. However, the Black children of the Magruder village were not allowed to attend that school. They had to go to Bruton Heights in James City County. Dr. Butler mentioned the height and civil unrest during the 50s. This included massive resistance to school integration. Virginia was being led by the Byrd Machine and led the country as Brown versus Board of Education was being discussed and enacted into law. We gave Dr. Carroll and Dr. Butler documentation in September 2024 that showed the post office was named Magruder in 1896 to honor the general. The village, the village was named in the same manner, the school was named in the same manner as the post office, which was Magruder. The conclusion was neither factual nor logical. Black schools honored men and women of integrity and those that had made contributions to society or education. The last names are sometimes not used in when...
All right, hold on a minute. All right, is there anybody who did not get a chance to speak on this particular, the pub, public participation of comments, who wanted to speak? Okay. I closed the public participation for comments of citizens. Will now open the public hearing on the Superintendent Search Survey. Okay, we have one person that is Pam Pouchot.
Pam Pouchot, still living District 4. I have a great concern about who this board will choose to represent the school division, who will run the school division, hopefully who will work for the students and the staff. I fear it's going to be a MAGA Trump supporter, which means education will be thrown in the garbage can, and that's being polite. The sole goal of the federal government at this point is to do away with the Department of Education- of Education, in theory to turn it over to the states, but as we've seen, at least at the college level, it still wants to be run on whatever Trump is thinking about that day. I don't want to see that here. People move to this community for the education. Now granted, we have a large Republican group of people here, but when they send their kids to school, it's not Republican or Democrat. They send them for their education. And I want those kids to have a decent education. Don't be afraid to teach the truth. Don't ban things. Children need to learn, and they can't learn with lies. And so far, that's all our federal government is doing to us, is lying and discriminating. And you may hate the term DEI. Well, first of all, it never applied to public schools. That was college-level mess. But that's not the point. The point is, we should all be inclusive. There should be equality amongst our students. And we should not discriminate, no matter where they're from, what their religion is, who their parents are, what their sexual identity is. Who the hell cares what they want to do in a bedroom? Hopefully, they're not doing it until they get out of high school. However, I want somebody who that will stand up for our community, who will stand up for our children, and have as much love for the job and the kids as Dr. Staples and Dr. Shandor. Thank you.
Thank you. I now close the public hearing on the Superintendent's search survey. We'll now move into financial matters, and Mr. Richardson will discuss financial matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Significant expenditures for September, instructional-related expenditures totaled approximately $3,439,000 and included payments, too, and I'll just highlight some of the higher-dollar ones. AMN Healthcare, $19,200 for a contracted speech-language pathologist. Instructure, $77,700 for educational training services. OneXL Learning, $110,100 for renewal of instructional software. New Horizons, $2,843,000 for tuition and career and technical in the governor's school and special education programs. And Plan B Academy, $56,200 for CSA tuition. And Renaissance Learning, $72,800 for NearPod renewal. And all of this report is also on Board Docs if you'd like to review it. Payments for transportation totaled approximately $59,200 and included the payment to RK Chevrolet for two vehicles for transportation. And payments for technology-related services totaled approximately $549,500 and included some of the top payments, too. ACES, $21,200 for building automation controls at Waller Mill Elementary. CDW, $262,700 for replacement computers, miscellaneous computer supplies, VMware software and annual support. And daily computers, $86,200 for HiFlex classroom equipment. Tyler Technology, $77,300 for Verstaran, Verstaran, I guess, transportation software that tracks our buses and that sort of thing. And then Virginia Business Systems, $31,100 for division-wide copier fleet for the school division. Payments for administration totaled approximately $15,827, and it was a payment to VRSA for workman's compensation billing. Payments for operations and maintenance totaled $464,050 and included some payments to Dominion Power, $311,900. Granger, $27,750 for custodial maintenance supplies. Republic Services, $11,150 for solid waste disposable service, disposal services. And Riverside Hospital, $75,000 for our quarterly athletic trainer services that we contract with them on. And Riverside Paper, $12,100, custodial bathroom supplies there. Payments to school nutrition totaled approximately $298,500. Payments to Alto Hartley for food service equipment at Bethel Manor Elementary was $89,300. And Sodexo was paid $209,200 for food service operations for the month. Payments to CIP projects totaled approximately $1299,000. Some of those payments were to Centennial Contractors, $215,500 for the renovations for the Tab High York Middle Auditoriums and York High Bathroom and the Athletic Storage Rooms. HAV Tech Services for Yorktown Middle School HVAC unit replacement, $130,100. Legacy Construction Services for $26,000 for fitness equipment at Queens Lake, and that was a fundraiser actually that paid for that. Lux Out Products, $45,100 for the curtains at Tab High York Middle School Auditoriums. Mobile Lease, $33,400 for the learning cottages. That's the trailers we have at some of the schools. The Virginia School Equipment Company, $764,900 for replacement of auditorium seating for TAB, York, Bruton, and Yorktown Middle. So significant changes relating to the operating budget. The state revenue for September of 2025 is about $1.3 million higher than September of 2024, and that increase is primarily driven by higher student enrollment, additional special education funding, and expanded funding for support positions. For expenditures, total operating expenditures for September 2025 is approximately $856,000 less than September 2024. In the first quarter of 2024, our spending was down because of the remaining of the federal ester funds that we were spending, and a significant payment was made for textbook purchases as well. There were no significant changes relating to the food service budget. And consideration of approval of Resolution 25-63 requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $100,000 and change orders greater than $50,000. And there are two items on this resolution totaling $252,000, the details of which can be viewed on Board Docs. Madam Chair, I move to approve Financial Matters as listed.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question on the resolution portion, the second one. It says, "CDW Securely Content Filter Subscription, One-Year Renewal." Could you explain what that subscription is, please?
Yes, I believe I can, Ms. Fairman. The content filter is what is used to keep content out of our network that is not acceptable for students to use. That's in compliance with the SIPA standards. It only, it not only works on our network, our wireless network, but also for all of our laptops that we distribute to students. It's blocked on those units at their homes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve Financial Matters as listed. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
I'll now go over the consent calendar. We have approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes for a regular meeting on September 22nd, 2025, a special meeting on September 4th, 2025, a special meeting on October 8th, 2025, and a special meeting on October 14th, 2025. Approval of donations in the amount of $10,605. Approval of HR, excuse me, pay plan update. Approval of a lease agreement between the York County School Board of York County, Virginia, and Girls on the Run Hampton Roads. Approval of a lease agreement between the County School Board of York County, Virginia, and York River Concert Band. Approval of overnight field trips for the period of November 1st, 2025 through November 1st, 2026. Approval of student organizations and activities for the period, November 1st, 2025 through November 1st, 2026. Approval of consent calendar as listed. I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve the calendar.
Madam Chair, I have a point of personal privilege. There are two items that I would like pulled off of the consent calendar, and in the past, this has been denied, but I want to go over an issue with Robert's rules. It is a basic right of every member to discuss and vote on each motion because a consent agenda takes away that right for a minute in order to save some time. Because the right to discuss is so important, consent agendas carry an extra safeguard. If even one person wants to discuss a certain item, they can tell the presiding officer, the chair, and then that item comes off the consent agenda and is placed back onto the normal agenda. Let me see. Mount, it might sound like a lot of hassle, but there's a good reason for this. It does follow Robert's rules, and so I request that Section B be pulled because there are two items that I wish to abstain from. And then I would like Section F pulled from the consent calendar because I have some questions to ask about it. Thank you.
I need a motion and a second?
No, you don't. Just according to, according to Robert's rules, anything on the consent calendar by one person, and so I am the one person requesting that it be removed.
Hold. That's her motion, okay. All right, that's your motion.
It does not need a second.
I need a second.
It does not need a second.
I'm hearing from our... I'm hearing from our school board attorney that it needs a second.
I'll second to pull it out.
You'll second?
Yes, for those items to be separate.
Okay. Now we need to vote on it.
There, there is no vote needed on this because of Robert's rules' understanding that any member has a right to discuss any things. A consent calendar is put together for the idea that there's really no discussion, there's no issue with it, so for time-wise, you just go with the flow and you do everything all at once. But if any one member has anything they want to question or ask about, then it's automatically pulled so that that can handle.
There are, yeah, there's a section, "Are there any questions?"
Are there any questions? You could ask questions, and plus the minutes.
You need to ask questions, you can ask questions about it.
I would say on the minutes, if you're not there, you've approved them before when you weren't there, and even our board...
No, I did not.
Yes, you have. But the board attorney has said you don't, you don't have to be there to approve the minutes.
Okay, the...
But you do this every time, but so I guess we need to separate them each time.
Mr. Richardson, I am asking that they be pulled.
I know, I'm saying, you do this every time, so I guess we need to do that if it makes it simpler for you.
Thank you. As well, as well as number F?
Make a way to make it easy.
Thank you. As well as number F, because I have some particular questions to ask about that.
Could you ask the questions now before we pull it?
Why don't you just ask the questions about F now during... Because it's, it's said right here, I said, "Are there any questions?" You have the opportunity to ask questions about F. We can, I mean, pulling the minutes to vote on them separately, I can get that, but...
I think you can ask the questions.
All right. So if you have questions, ask questions.
I will ask a question about number F then. I want to be assured that on these overnight field trips...
It's not F, that's G.
That's G.
You said F.
Oh, whoops, sorry. My mistake. I circled the wrong one. I had it written, my notes written next to that one. So for G, with the overnight field trips, I want to have some formal assurance that biological boys and girls will be separated in overnight accommodations.
I'm going to defer to you for that one.
Ms. Fairman, the students are the ones that pick their roommates and will make accommodations if needed.
I'm asking for assurance that we have biological boys and biological girls separated in the overnight accommodations.
We, we have always done that.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the assurance is for this one.
Okay.
Okay, so question answered for that. So now, we want to...
Which minutes are we pulling? Can we just pull the ones?
I'm requesting to pull this regular meeting on September 22nd and the special meeting on September 24th.
Let's pull those out. I'd like to make a motion to approve a consent agenda as written, except pulling out regular meeting on September 22nd and special meeting on September 24th as a separate, separate item for vote.
You made the second? You made the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Howard?
Can someone please tell me the second set of minutes we're pulling, please?
It's September 22nd and the special meeting on September 24th. Regular meeting on the 22nd, the special meeting on the 24th.
Okay. A motion is made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the consent calendar as listed, with the exception of minutes from the regular meeting on September 22nd and the special meeting on September 24th. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes on regular meeting for September 22nd and special meeting for September 24th.
I'll second.
Oh, Ms. Howard, I'm sorry. Waiting on me, it's Ms. Howard.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the minutes from September 22nd and the regular meeting minutes from September 22nd and the special meeting on the 24th. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
I abstain as I was not in attendance.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed four to zero with one abstention.
Okay. All right, so I take it there will be some consistency now moving forward since those were approved by you in the past, so...
Of course, we could take care of it all by just attending the meetings.
All right, we'll move on to...
When one is out of town, you can't...
Action, consideration for approval for a proclamation for American Education Week, November 17th through to 21st, 2025. Dr. Carroll, do you have any comments?
Yes, the annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education and that each and every employee of the school division, be they teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I have a comment. I, I like the proclamation except the first line. It says, "Our democracy, the United States is not a democracy, it is a constitutional republic." And I respectfully request that we change that to read either "our constitutional republic" or "our republic" as opposed to "democracy." None of our founding documents state that we are a democracy. Thank you.
Let me... That's what I... All right, I need a second to change that? Okay. Second, so we'll proceed with the vote?
So we need to make a motion for, yeah, I need to, I would like to make a motion for approval of proclamation for American Education Week for, for week of November 17th to 21st, 25.
And I'll second.
Ms. Howard? Sorry.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve a proclamation for American Education Week, November 17th through the 21st, 2025. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes, with the note that it really needs to read "republic," not "democracy."
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
Okay. We do not have any policy discussion. Policy first reading, we have policy section C. Dr. Carroll, do you have any comments?
Oh, that's right. See if we already talked about it.
Right, we already talked about it.
No changes, yes.
Okay. We have policy, second reading, action vote tonight. Policy IGBGA, online courses and virtual school programs. That was previously presented to us. Is there any discussion? Okay, can I please have a first and a second to approve? I need a first. I need a first. I need a first, a motion in the second.
You need for each policy or for all?
I believe we do them individually.
We do them individually.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the policy IGBGA, online course and virtual school, uh, school program. Second.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve policy IGBGA, online courses and virtual school programs. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich? Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Mrs. Goodwin, I have a question. Did I miss something? It says, "Policy first reading, policy C, general school administration?"
We just did that in the work session.
Oh, okay.
There was no, no changes.
There was nothing, no, no changes.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if it needed to be reiterated here since it was on the agenda here. Thank you.
Next, we have policy IGAE slash IGAF, the Health Education Physical Education. Any discussion regarding this policy?
Let's make a motion first. Make a motion first.
I would like to make a motion for approval of policy IGAE, IGAF, Health Education Physical Education.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Actually, yes. I'd like to know, are these changes due to Virginia code requirements or for some other reason?
When we, Ms. Barry brought that up when she presented that.
I know, I'm asking again.
Okay, I'll defer to her.
Thank you.
Can you repeat your question?
The, the changes to policy IGAE slash IGAF, the Health Education Physical Education, are the changes regarding those listings specifically regarding mental health, are they due to Virginia code requirements or another reason?
That's Ms. Dr. Skinner's.
Yeah, can we ask Dr. Skinner to come up and address this?
Thank you.
Sorry, it's the policies, I defer to you.
The, when we added the information under the health instruction includes the following topics, I think that's what you're referring to. That has been a part of the code, and we just outlined it for more transparency with our families so that they would see what is included in that health instruction.
Okay, so it is included by code?
Um, I believe it's code or it's, 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 I think it's part of the code. I apologize for not having that in front of me right now. But it is outlined in the, if you look down at the bottom of that, that legal reference, it's there, listed under that legal reference there.
Okay, that's what, I just was curious why it was being added now and had not been there before.
Right, so we added the information on the junior reserves officers training to this, and we also added the information on, I believe it's hazing to this, am I correct? Yes. And so when we did that, we reviewed the whole policy. And when we, we did that, we wanted to also, since we were reviewing the policy, we thought it would be very helpful to put exactly what is part of that. It's not anything new, it's just what we've been teaching.
Right, I was looking more at the bullet points above that.
Right, that's correct. So when we went in to make the policy changes for the other two, which were required by code, those areas were already part of what has been included. And so we said, since we're already doing that particular changes in policy, we would go ahead and add the other pieces which have been part of our instruction ongoing. This isn't new instruction, this is what we've been teaching.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Skinner.
All right.
There's been a motion and a second.
Okay, we're ready.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve policy IGAE, IGAF, Health Education Physical Education. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
I'd just like to state that all of this was discussed in the first reading that we had on policy. All right, we're going to review policy IGAJ, Driver Education. I need a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve policy IGAJ, Driver Education.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve policy IGAJ, Driver Education. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
All right, next we have policy IIBE A slash GAB, Acceptable Computer System Use.
I would like to make a motion for policy approval of IIBE A, GAB, Acceptable Computer System Use.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve policy IIBE A, GAB, Acceptable Computer System Use. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich? Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
All right. We'll now move into the report of the superintendent. Dr. Carroll, I turn that time over to you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. My report tonight will focus mostly on my activities in my first month in the position. My priority has been to get out into schools. I've visited four Yorktown Schools, York Zone Schools with Mrs. Goodwin, three with Mr. Richardson, five in the Grafton and Tab Zones with Mr. Pyavich, and all four in the Bruton Zone with Mr. Schaefer. We helped with homecoming wall decoration judging, visited some of the newly renovated high school auditoriums. But what I've enjoyed the most is getting into classrooms. Some of those highlights included our computer science resource classes in elementary, our new teacher laptop technology that allows all of our teachers freedom of movement in the classroom while they're carrying out instruction, the world language pilot at Bethel Manor Elementary, and the first lesson of our new initiative for enriching fifth-grade math classes that we'll be reporting out to the board on in January. I've also started visiting our new principals to check on their progress and to lend any support at Bruton High, York High, and Tab Middle, and I've got a couple more to do. I've also been touching base with leadership of some of our most important community partners, Sheriff Montgomery, the base commanders at Joint Base Langley and Naval Weapons Station, York County senior staff, and attended with our executive team to the county PTA meeting. I also attended the Division Band Expo last week, which was just a wonderful night and that we had a great night for it. Also, the Yorktown Elementary School STEM Night the week before. That event had quite a turnout and provided the students a wide range of STEM-related activities for students to do with their parents. Also participated in mock job interviews at York High School and was able to catch a few games of volleyball, field hockey, and football, the last of which included the honor of presenting the Hovis Cup along with Coach Hovis's daughter Leah to this year's winner, Tab High School. I know it's also been a month, but we were notified just after last month's meeting of the announcement of our 2025 NIECH rating. NIECH rated us the number-one school division in the state of Virginia. And this came out just a, a day before Dr. Shandor's last day, so a nice way to go out. Speaking of Dr. Shandor, Mrs. Goodwin shared some remarks in honor of him last month on behalf of the board, and I'd like to take the opportunity and liberty to take that option and speak on behalf of staff. We all owe Dr. Shandor a debt of gratitude for his service and leadership over the last decade that came at sometimes a personal cost. Every day, he brought a passion and energy that left no doubt that he was intent on making this school division the best it could be. I think to put it best, I'd like to quote a piece from the Teddy Roosevelt speech known as "Man in the Arena" that I believe he embodies. He who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end of the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. I think those words are apt. And on a personal note, I want to thank him for his investment in me, bringing me to York County as his first hire, coaching and mentoring all along, and placing great responsibility in my hands. I will eternally be grateful. And Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me one more thing, I'd like to give a shout out to my son and his wife, who in the wee hours of last night brought us another grandchild. Eden Ann was born. I was some, I was asleep, I don't know. But that's presumably our last grandchild, and so I just wanted to mention that, so.
Congratulations.
That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Way to go.
Madam Chair, just want to say to Dr. Carroll that I appreciate him for taking the three days and visiting five schools with me. I enjoyed it, his interactions with the staff, administrative principals, assistant principals, kids. We just had a good time. Me and he, we witnessed some good stuff, like math, a program that just got launched. We were so excited to see the children being involved. We didn't spark, we were there within the first five minutes.
The very, we were there for the very first class. Literally like five minutes in, we walk in, the principal, Mr. Pyavich, and myself, and the teacher was shocked. I don't think she was expecting that on the first day. But the, the class went great. It's, it's really great. And we'll talk to you aligned with our PSAT conversation in January about how that's going to help us expand opportunity.
And I just want to also add, Dr. Carroll's doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I echo those same sentiments, Dr. Carroll. I really appreciated, you know, you hitting the ground running and taking the time to get out to all the schools with me and the extra piece, the extra emphasis on the educational piece in the classroom. That was very helpful. So I too think you're doing a great job.
And I'd like to thank you for being flexible with your schedule. We met early in the morning in Bruton, and after Bruton, I said, Jim, you're not going to make the schedule. So he cleared it, and we ended up spending about four hours together going through the schools. It was fun.
All right. At this time, I'm offering comments of citizens who did not sign up to speak previously. If there's anyone who wishes to speak now that did not get a chance to sign up before the meeting, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your input and for being here this evening. We have a work session here at York Hall on November tenth at 6:00 PM. We do have a closed session this evening. Can I please have a board member make a motion to take us to closed session?
I move that York County School Board convene closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section two dot two dash thirty-seven, eleven, A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consideration discussion regarding specific candidates for appointment to the following advisory committee, Special Education Advisory Committee. As matters addressed in closed session are confidential, no minutes or recordings are permitted.
Second.
Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the York County School Board to meet in closed session as stated. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero, you're in closed session.